Parcels of land that are being considered by the city council. The Lake Association has concerns about the use of the parcels for public recreation. Narcissus Road and Olive Road are located in a quiet residential neighborhood that is not suitable for a public park. These roads are very narrow, they do not allow for on-street parking. Narcissus is a dead-end road, and traffic increases will cause problems for people living on Narcissus, Olive, and other neighborhood roads. All the streets are private, so the only access to both parcels is via private property. We are also concerned that greater traffic will require more road maintenance by neighborhood residents. The two parcels are secluded, are in an secluded neighborhood, and the policing of park visitors would be very difficult. There are also health and safety troubles that will arise by attracting strangers. Neighborhood residents worry that illegal activities such as opioid and alcohol abuse often happen within isolated public parks, could happen, not to mention the bringing in of strangers to a close-knit family area. We also know that park users will be attracted to the lake and suspect they will be tempted for trespassing on the private beaches. The membership in the LSPOA is required to be on any of these beaches, and I do note that any Lemonster resident can join the Lake Association, which assigns beaches to the members. Dues paid by the members provide funds needed for lake management projects and other improvements throughout the lake property. We also have reviewed the Lemonster Open Space and Recreation Department Plan that is available on the city website. This excellent document has provided, provides a comprehensive seven-year plan for accomplishing the conservation and recreation priorities of Lemonster residents and city officials. The plan wisely describes the city needs, goals, and objectives for 2014 through 2021, but this plan does not recommend the use of Narcissus and Olive Road parcels for recreational purposes. Giving attention to an unwanted public park will divert limited city resources from recreational opportunities that are recommended by the plan. We ask the city council to carefully study this odd gift of land for recreation use or general municipal purposes. The intended use should be examined in order to evaluate the public benefits and the municipal costs for acquisition of the two parcels. There should be a budget regarding the use of the abandoned house or the cost of demolition of this building, and a cleanup or removal of a defunct septic system. The budget should include the cost of supply in public restrooms, parking areas, and other improvements. The budget should also describe the annual cost for the maintenance of recreation facilities and private road access. This detailed budget should be presented to the Lemonster residents and Lake Association members for their response and advice prior to acceptance, so that the members can more readily see what the plan would be, and if it would be a benefit for the city, as well as a safe, as well as safe and acceptable to our private area. In closing, we thank the city council for your consideration of these comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So that's all that has signed up, so I will ask, would anybody in the audience like to speak to the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone to state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody else like to speak to the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody else like to speak to the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Now that the public forum is open, over, I respectfully request Ms. Russo to stay here. As when we get into this, if there's a possibility, we might have some questions regarding the Sammaset Association. Thank you.
And it won't take us too long to get through our business, and we'll get to the to the matter, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.[309.58]
December 12th, 2017. Dear Ms. Bouchard, the Leominster Health Department has reviewed the proposal to accept the land at 15 Narcissus Road. According to the Building Department, the existing house needs to be razed, as it is not structurally sound. We did not see any outstanding issues on the property when we went there in 2016. Poison ivy along the roadside in on the property was proliferating enough that we could not walk near the house. We do not know if this parcel would be eligible for development with regard to lot size and configuration. There is no municipal sewer line at the property, but there is one some distance away. An onsite septic system may be able to service the property. The NRCS web soil survey suggests the soils are comprised of sand and gravel. Specific testing on the site would be needed to determine the feasibility of using a septic system. We hope the Legal Affairs Committee of the City Council finds our comments useful in their evaluation of this petition. Please feel free to contact our office if you need further information or if anyone would like to discuss our opinion. Those are the letters that we did receive.
Conservation?
I read that last meeting. I don't know, does anyone wish to hear that again? Okay. Yeah, there were several department heads that chimed in, and we read those last meeting, I think. The Planning Board was in favor of it. Conservation was in favor of it. I, you know, I would have to go to the other members of my committee at this point, but I personally think that there's, you know, there's more questions than answers, really, at this point, especially with a building with asbestos located on the property that needs to be razed. So my recommendation, I understand that the property owner has given us some type of informal deadline of the end of the year, but my, notwithstanding that, my personal recommendation at this point is further time, and if the Subcommittee wants, we can have a Subcommittee meeting and invite more people down, or table for study with the same intention, but I'd ask you to poll the committee members at this point.
Sure. Counsel Freida.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the questions that I had, that I brought up the last meeting was access, and if it was used for recreation. What if 20 people at once decide to show up? There's parking issues or a number of, I represented that area for 16 years. I think I got a pretty good handle on how the people feel up there. They're very protective and very concerned about the lake and the property. One of the questions I asked was access, because it is private, and I don't think that was answered. I don't know if we asked the mayor that, but that was one of the questions I had at the last meeting. So, I mean, it's not his fault, so if we didn't ask him. But that's still a major concern of mine. I apologize for not being here for the public forum, but I could guess some of the comments were exactly what I thought. I'm not supportive of this at this point. There's going to be a lot more discussion. There's the, you know, the recreational aspect. Why would we be doing recreational on private property? If it's something that the Lake Samoset Association wants, then that's a whole different picture. Why was it not, was it or was it not offered to the association to begin with? I would think that's a smarter way to go, then the membership can control it. The board could control it. I don't think this is something that the city should be dealing with. Unless it's something I'm not aware of. Knowing that area, knowing the rules and the regulations of the board and the association, I'll go along with tabling it, but I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered first.
Counsel Marshian.
Through the chair, just for clarification, that recommendation was further time from the chair?
I, further time or table, I was looking for some feedback.
Okay, so if I have the floor, Mr. President.
Sure.
Earlier today, further time seemed to be the way to go, but after taking a look at the package and the deal and the timeline, I don't know if that would even be a way to go in respect to the person who was involved with the property itself, who owns the property right now. With that being said, I'm in strong opposition, I have a difference of opinion. I'm in strong opposition to the city taking this parcel or buying the parcel. One of the things that happens is, and with all due respect to the mayor, when someone comes to you with a gift like this, it's a great situation. But unfortunately, like even the liability, this is not going to be a dwelling. It's going to be razed and it's going to be open space. And we, and as far as who's going to have jurisdiction over that, I would assume that it would either be Conservation or it would be the Leominster Recreation Department, but it has to be someone. It has to be, someone has to have jurisdiction on the land in order to be able to take care of it. You know, we have problems with open space right now that's kind of in limbo. And an example of that is the backyard of Carter, when we have to call the school department, but then they call the rec department, and then they get involved with the DPW. So it's a little bit of a challenge to actually make a determination who's going to maintain them. As far as the Samoset Association is concerned, my last visit to that neighborhood, the roads were really in disrepair, and to try to get the DPW to do anything was impossible, because it is not a public way. So they understand, everybody understands it. In the past, there's been a little bit of pressure relieved, but not significant enough to take care of major rainstorms that we have, for example, for runoff, snow plowing, et cetera. So, the lake is private. You know, Samoset never comes to us for anything. They take care of it themselves. And I can't imagine, you know, encroaching upon that with a city piece of property that, as stated in the mayor's letter to us, would be intended for recreational use, which would be what you'd expect it to be. But it is a private lake. It is run by an association. You know, we don't want to see a tent camp set up there. What happens if all of a sudden there's a bunch of people that want to hang out there in tents? You can't, city property is so frustrating to deal with when we have situations, we know downtown, for example, that we have problems downtown with people who are sometimes using it for the wrong reasons. But it is a public way, and they do have rights, and I respect those rights. But we also have to be considerate to the association, and I don't see how we could tie that piece in with any kind of a partnership without really taking ownership as a city to make sure roads are safe, and there's a plan behind it. There is a timeline, it is sensitive, and with all due respect to the petitioner, I think that we should walk away from this deal right now. Maybe the petitioner can meet with the association, and they might be able to, I don't know if they've been approached in the past. They might consider getting involved with it for their own reasons. Other than that, I don't think the city should engage in it at all. It's just out of the way, it doesn't make sense from this seat. So, my position would be to leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, Counsel Shafra Zephyr.
Thank you very much. I would go along with leave to withdraw without prejudice. I don't see, in looking at, you know, the Lake Samoset Property Owners Association, I mean, it looks clear to me that the, in order to access the water, I mean, you have to be a member of the association. So in order to use, I mean, it's private property. So I think that's a big assumption, that if the city made that lot into recreational land, that any other people who are not members of the association could in fact use it. So that's the first question, or one of my initial problems. The second question or the problem that I have is that we did ask the mayor which city department would have jurisdiction over the property. And we asked that specifically, because in the past, maintenance of, you know, ongoing maintenance of parks has really not been addressed. I mean, it usually falls to the Recreation Department. There really isn't a budget to do that kind of maintenance. So again, I think that was certainly part of my rationale for having that question asked. And the response was completely inadequate. The response is the property would be acquired by the City of Leominster generally. Okay, doesn't address maintenance, doesn't really address who in fact has jurisdiction over the property. And then the cost of demolition and cleanup, that's a very important question. Were we to proceed? I know that Mr. Niall made an estimate of less than $60,000. He believes there's asbestos there. We wouldn't know the extent of the asbestos. There could be contamination, I mean, who knows where that goes? We've all seen those, you know, huge problems when a site is more contaminated than is initially thought. So for a variety of reasons, and specifically, most importantly, I think, because the Lake Samoset is a private association. I would go along with the Ward Five Counselor's recommendation to give it leave to withdraw.
Thank you very much. Counsel Badanza.
All right, well, from my viewpoint, the primary question here is is that the city would stand to gain the rights of the landowner if they acquired this. And the landowner's rights, I suspect, to use that way are an easement in common with the other landowners in the area. And that is for residential purposes. So if you now turn it into a park or a recreational facility of some kind, I think you're going to have a legal problem, which would involve overburdening the easement. There's a concept that if you have an easement for a purpose, implied or stated, you can't use that same easement for something that's much more invasive than what was originally obtained. So I think at the outset, there's a legal issue there. When you couple, I don't really want to spend the money on Copman and Page to find out about that, because I think there's all those other problems that have been mentioned by the other counselors. So, I mean, the question is, we're taking it off the tax rolls. What's, on the other side, what's the benefit to the city? And when we look at, you know, taking it off the tax rolls, the costs associated with developing it, and then, you know, the legal issues that are involved, and we look at, you know, the fact that we've got a sensitive area with homeowners that surround it that have legitimate concerns. I would agree, I mean, you know, if somebody could come back with something that makes sense, maybe involving the association, it might be looked at differently, but at this point, I would say, let's just go leave to withdraw without prejudice and get it done with.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
If I may go back to the chair, through the chair, for reconsideration on that. It's the holidays.
Yeah.
We need these people to be at ease. This is, I mean, if this was some kind of a partnership that had already been established, and they were fine with it, we would represent them. But you heard tonight from the leader of the group, and there's too many uncertainties, and no one had, I mean, they could be, you know, they could be erroneous, as far as people are concerned, but these are real concerns tonight. And I'd just as soon get away from the deal, let the landowner do what he has to do. So I would ask for reconsideration on that.
Yeah, I certainly don't have a problem with leave to withdraw. I don't have a problem with that at all. I was giving, I was looking at this as more the property owners probably trying to look for some kind of tax write-off in giving the property to us, and there's just too many, there's just too many questions for us to do anything tonight anyway, so. I don't have a problem with leave to withdraw. If they want to come back with a more comprehensive plan, so be it.
Counsel Freida, do you want to change?
I certainly don't have a problem with leave to withdraw. The only reason I thought, you know, to table it, I knew the end result was going to be not doing it anyway. My biggest question is the fact that these people didn't go to the Lake Samoset Association and offer to donate it to them. That's a major issue, whether there's, you know, talk to each other, or whether there's, you know, a reason not to do it. I'm sure there is, I could see by the expressions is, but that's a key to me. I mean, if you're, you get a piece of land that you want to give up, and it's within an organization, an association, that's the person you're going to go to first. You're not going to go to the city and say, hey, you want it? I mean, it's, I have no problem with leave to withdraw, because I really think there's something behind this whole thing, and I, again, I said I'd know the area pretty well for 16 years and 16 different boards that I worked with, so I can fully appreciate, you know, their efforts and what their concerns would be. So I'm good with that.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like you have a unanimous recommendation now to give this petition leave to withdraw without prejudice?
We do, we do, yep.
Okay, all right, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give C-19 leave to withdraw without prejudice. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I just want to disclose that I am a member of the Lake Samoset Association. However, I do not own property there, so I have absolutely no financial interest, you know, so I just, but I just did want to disclose that I am a member of that organization. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of giving C-19 leave to withdraw without prejudice, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-19 has been given leave to withdraw without prejudice. And we will move right on to-
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. We will move right on to-
You too.
Items under Finance. C-23, is the Chairman of Finance ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-23, relative to the appropriation of $597,345 to the Recreation Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. This matter is in relationship to a grant application to develop the park on Mechanic Street. The $597,345 will leverage approximately $400,000 in grant money, if the grant in fact is secured. And I think that the grant administrator is here, if anybody has any questions for her before we proceed. I don't know if anyone does.
So you want, do you want to have a motion for recess?
Yeah.
Okay, like to take a motion for a recess. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Cormier. All those in favor of taking a recess, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the City Council now stands in recess. Wendy, would you like to come in?
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, Counsel Shafra Zephyr, I believe you had a question.
Do I just have a quick one? What's the timeframe for the grant, Wendy? When would we, the city, get reimbursed?
Well, it's a little bit of an odd situation, because usually they award the grant in November, but they haven't done it yet. So we expect sometime in probably January, February, the awards will come out. And then we usually start spending the money in July. It's usually, it should be by the end of the year, we should be done. It should be a quick process. So when the grant, so when we actually, when the project is completed and signed off by the state, that's when we get the money back.
Oh, okay, so it's a reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay, but we do have the commitment from the state that the grant has been awarded?
We do not.
Oh, we do not?
We do not. That's, when I spoke at the last meeting, that's what's so odd about this situation, is they're requiring us to actually front the money before we even know about the award. That's why I said before, you know, I'll leave it up to the council what you want to do. It's just an odd situation. I asked again if the awards were going to be soon, and they just couldn't tell me so. But they are requiring it by the end of the year, that we, you know, get the money appropriated.
So there is a remote possibility that the city could be on the hook for the whole?
No, we wouldn't go forward. We wouldn't-
Oh, okay, of course, right, right, yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions?
That was my question, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Wendy.
Merry Christmas, Wendy.
Counsel now stands back in session. Mr. Chairman, back to-
Yeah, okay, well, given that explanation, it would appear to me that this, at least personally, makes sense. And I would just check with my members of the committee, if they have their opinions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Counsel Marshian?
Through the chair, I concur.
So, Mr. President, the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee is to grant C-23.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-23, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed?
Does it have to be a voice vote? I know it has to be a super majority, right?
If you want a voice vote, I-
No, I thought it, I thought it had to, for the grant.
All right, by a vote of nine to zero, C-23 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $597,345 be appropriated to the Recreation Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the chairman's request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-23 has been adopted. Moving on to an item under Old Business, we have a resolution, which is regarding C-23, and I ask the Chairwoman of Ways and Means if she's ready to report.
I am ready to report. Mr. President, I just have one concern about the resolution, that perhaps it should include the wording that Ms. Weeks had given us, that should the grant not be awarded, the funds will be available for return to the stabilization account. And through the chair, maybe we could have Counselor Badanza weigh in on that.
Counsel Badanza.
Well, usually, these resolutions are pretty specific with respect to the state, so I don't want to tinker with it. If the grant doesn't happen, the money will end up back free cash ultimately. So I don't think we really need to do that.
So you feel comfortable with not leaving, okay. A resolution- A resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for Communities Grant Program for a new park at the corner of Mechanic and Laurel Streets in the City of Leominster. Whereas the French Hill area of the City of Leominster is a densely populated area with little open space, the development of the Mechanic Laurel Street area of the city as a new park is a priority, as evidenced in the most recent Open Space and Recreation Plan and the Gateway Plus Action Plan. And whereas the Mechanic Street Park will greatly enhance the French Hill neighborhood by creating open space for recreation purposes immediately adjacent to the Third Street Playground area, and expanding the site's open space acreage. And whereas the main focus of the park is to improve access to open space for neighborhood families and individuals for picnicking, walking, running, unorganized sports, and general leisure. Whereas said property is designated as recreational land under Chapter 45, Section 3, by deed and subsequent vote of the City Council, and is under the jurisdiction of the Leominster Recreation Department. And whereas said land adjacent to the current playground has been designated as recreational land under Chapter 45, Section 3, by deed and vote of the City Council, and will be under the jurisdiction of the Leominster Recreation Department. And whereas the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support the preservation and restoration of urban parks through the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities. And whereas creation of the new Mechanic Street Park will cost a total of $597,345, and the city has allocated $597,345 through the stabilization count for the purposes of the Mechanic Street Park. Now therefore be it that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Leominster Recreation Department, and that this resolution shall take effect upon passage. And, Mr. President, my recommendation would be that we accept this resolution, and I will ask you to poll my committee.
Counsel Marshian?
Through the chair, I agree.
Counsel Lanciani?
I agree.
Okay, so it sounds like a unanimous recommendation by the Ways and Means Committee to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? Counsel Freida.
Maybe not necessarily a discussion, but just a compliment to the city and to Wendy. And it's so commonplace that we're getting so many grants that you could almost look at it as taken for granted. But they're not easy to get, and it's a real credit that our city has been able to get so many. So, just wanted to note that.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Freida.
Yay.
Counsel Dubrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Shafra Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Effekli.
Yay.
Counsel Badanza.
Yay.
Counsel Lanciani.
Yay.
Counsel Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Marshian.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. This resolution has been adopted, and I just want to remind everybody that you've got to sign this piece of paper before you leave as well.
Yeah, pass it around.
I'll sign it in a second, pass it around. All right, now we will move on to the other business before us, which is communications from the mayor. Madam Clerk.
C-25, Dean J. Masarilla Mayor requests the City Council allow the deficit spending of the Snow and Ice Expense Account in the amount not to exceed $250,000, as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D.
Okay, and C-25 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Okay, and C-25 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions.
2118, David Arcomia, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-66-6, entitled Senior Citizen Pocket, and repeal this section.
Okay, 21-18 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Mr. President, do you want to take 2118 to 2418 and block?
Sure, that's fine, if there's no objection.
2218, David Arcomia, create a left turn prohibition on it, should say Albert, not Alder Drive, northwestbound to Central Street, southbound. 2318, David Arcomia, sign on Albert Drive against southwestbound drivers at Central Street. 2418, David Arcomia and Starly Yale sign facing drivers on Albert Drive heading northwestbound onto Central Street.
Okay, 21-18, 22-18, 23-18, and 24-18 will be referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course for all four petitions with a referral to the Traffic Division of the Police Department.
Okay, these four petitions have been given regular course with a referral to the Traffic Division of the Police Department. Moving on to 25-18.
Mr. President, through the chair, do you also do the DPW, too, to be sure that these are all accepted streets?
Sure.
And also the DPW?
Sure.
Okay, moving on to 25-18.
2518, David Arcomia, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-79, entitled Yale Signs, to reflect the existing signs as follows. Litchfield Street, facing drivers on the exit to Litchfield Street from Central Street northbound. Litchfield Street, facing drivers exiting Litchfield Street, heading southbound on Central Street.
Okay, and 25-18 is also referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the Traffic Department of the Leominster Police Department.
Okay, and 25-18 has been given regular course with a referral to the Traffic Department of the Leominster Police Department. Moving on to 26-18.
2618, David Arcomia, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-77, entitled Stop Signs by Deleting the Following. Tansio Road against eastbound and westbound drivers at Aspenwald Avenue. Graham Street against east and westbound drivers at Central Street. Litchfield Street against southwestbound drivers at Central Street. Willard Street against northeastbound drivers at Lancaster Street. Viscloyd against southbound drivers at Lancaster Street. Whitney Street against northeast and southwestbound drivers at Mechanic Street. Whitney Street against northeast and southwestbound drivers at Water Street. Lyndale Avenue against eastbound and westbound drivers at Merrim Avenue. Washington Street against northeast and southeastbound drivers at Merrim Avenue. Bel Air Heights against eastbound drivers at O'Mill Road. Aspenwald Avenue against northbound drivers at Melbourne Street. Johnson Street, northwestbound entering Viscloyd Avenue. Johnson Street, southwestbound entering Viscloyd Avenue. Day Street against southwestbound drivers at Main Street. North Street against east and westbound drivers at Main Street. Mill Street against westbound drivers at Harre Street. Mill Street against westbound drivers entering Harre Street. Park Street against southbound drivers at Monument Square. River Street against northwestbound drivers at Hamilton Street. River Street against southeastbound drivers at Main Street. Nickel Street against northbound drivers at North Main Street. Lyndale Avenue against eastbound drivers at North Main Street. Cross Street against westbound drivers at Central Street.
26-18 is also referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the Traffic Department of the Leominster Police Department and the Department of Public Works.
Okay, and 26-18 has been given regular course with a referral to the Traffic Department of the Leominster Police Department, as well as the DPW. Moving on to 27-18.
2718, David Arcomia, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-77, entitled Stop Signs to reflect the following existing stop signs. Bainbridge Street against southeastbound drivers at Willard Street. Graham Street against westbound drivers at Union Street. Gamash Lane against southbound drivers at Grant Street. De Chico Drive against northbound drivers at Union Street. Grant Street against eastbound drivers at Central Street. Research Drive against eastbound drivers at Central Street. Emerson Lane against northbound drivers at Holland Woods Road. Holland Woods Road against westbound drivers at Pleasant Street. Walden Court against northbound drivers at Holland Woods Road. Tansio Road against northeastbound drivers at Lancaster Street. Tansio Road against eastbound drivers at Melbourne Street. Bel Air Heights against westbound drivers at Leggett Hill Road.
Bel Air Heights against westbound drivers at Leggett Hill Road. Sammaset Drive against southeast bound drivers at Willard Street. Spindletop Drive against southwest bound drivers at Sammaset Drive. Ballard Court against northwest bound drivers at Sammaset Drive. Keeneland Circle against southeast bound drivers at Sammaset Drive. Candlewood Drive against northwest bound drivers at Keeneland Circle. Candlewood Drive against eastbound drivers at Willard Street. Sammaset Drive against northeast bound drivers at Candlewood Drive, intersection closest to Willard Street. Candlewood Drive against east, against southeast bound and northwest bound drivers at Sammaset Drive. And Sammaset Drive against southwest bound and northeast bound drivers at Candlewood Drive.
Okay. And 27-18 has, has referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the Traffic Department of the Leominster Police Department and the DPW.
Okay. And 27-18 is being given regular course with a referral to the Traffic Department of the Police Department and the DPW. I don't know if you're going to want to set up, I, I, you know, a subcommittee meeting so I can explain all of this, or if you want to muscle through this at a meeting, but that's up to you.
No, I'll most likely set up a, okay, a subcommittee meeting, probably once we get into the new year. I don't, I don't think tonight.
Okay. All right. And moving on to appointments, Madam Clerk?
Disability Commission, David Cormier, expires 4/15/2019.
Okay. And this appointment will be referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, and I believe that this is David R. Cormier.
That's correct.
Who's also the Ward Three Counselor. So I don't believe that we need to have an interview, because we should have him in-house the next meeting.
I don't know about that either.
I would grill him.
I don't know about that.
I would grill him.
Find out if he's paid his dues at Sammaset Association first.
A lot of questions.
Otherwise, we will have to send him a certified letter.
And I'm glad that you specified David R. Cormier, because we all know in this community you have to ask those questions before you make assumptions.
Exactly. These things have to be specific.
Thank you very much. So this appointment to the Disability Commission has been given regular course. I believe that that is all that's on the agenda. Okay. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge our counselor-elect, Frank Iger. He's here in the audience tonight. And so, at the next meeting of this body, you will be having fun with us in here, so welcome, and we look forward to working with you. And I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, whatever you, whatever it is that you celebrate. And if there's nothing else to come before the Leominster City Council at this special meeting, I'll now ask for a motion by Counselor Lanciani for the, for the last time to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. For a number of years now, this bottle of water has sat on this desk between Counselor Badanza and myself. And as I told the good counselor when he sat down this evening, this bottle's going to disappear.
He can take it home and drink it.
Thank you. Thank you all for being such ladies and gentlemen, and it's been a pleasure to serve with each and every one of you. You've got a hell of a crew. Keep it up. And I'm sure Frank will be here and do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good holiday, everybody.
Do I have a second for adjournment? Seconded by Counselor Cormier. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the special meeting of the Leominster City